Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, if we please call to order our regular city commission meeting for March 5th, 2019 at 7 o'clock, we have roll call, please.
Commissioner Madroski?
Here.
Commissioner Parnas?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Here.
Mayor Gans?
Here. Before we stand for our moment of silence and our pledge of allegiance, Commissioner Parnas would like to make an announcement.
Unfortunately, we lost somebody who came to almost every commission meeting for the last several years. Herb Saslow, president of his building in Century Village and president of the Democratic Club in Century Village, passed away last week. There will be a memorial service in the village at a place called La Club at 1:30 tomorrow to celebrate his life. Anybody who would like to attend can see me after the meeting. I will take your name and assure that you can get into the service. Thank you.
Thank you. We'd all have a moment of silence and our pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which extends, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If I could just remind everyone to please silence their phones. Appreciate it. We have approval of the city commission meeting minutes for January 15th, 2019 and February 5th, 2019.
I made a motion to approve all of them, even the one you were going to announce, a second.
We have a motion and a second just for the regular city commission meeting minutes, if that's all right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, passage unanimously. Announcement of our city board meeting minutes for planning and zoning board, December 6th, 2018, January 10th, 2019, our education advisory board meeting minutes for December 5th, 2018.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, passage unanimously. And our approval of our city commission agenda for March 5th, 2019.
Motion to approve the agenda for tonight.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I'm going to have a couple of minor additions during the awards and recognition. If that's all right with everyone?
With those additions.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, passage unanimously. Awards and recognition. Commissioner Miller, you make the presentation.
Do I have it in front of me?
I hope so.
I'm afraid I don't have it written. Let's see again.
It's your big moment, Joe, don't blow it.
Yes, my big moment, I missed the opportunity. I'd like to announce, we're going to have a presentation for the Aging and Disability Resource Center, and one of our representatives is going to come up and tell us more about that. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. My name is Natasha Al Fagali. I am the interim executive director and finance director for the area wide council on aging of Broward County, which administers the Aging and Disability Resource Center. In January 2019, we honored this wonderful city along with four others that have achieved a milestone at our annual installation dinner. At the dinner, we presented a 30-year full fair share plaque to Commissioner Ted Dorsky. Of course, we took it back, which is the reason why I'm here tonight. We wanted to present the plaque to the entire commission. The plaque reads as follows. "For 30 years of full fair share advocacy award presented to the city of Deerfield Beach, elders' lives are enhanced by the creativity of laudable leaders who gift their talents to the passage of time and record their accomplishments on the indelible pages of history. Area-wide council on aging, January 17th, 2019." I would love for the whole commission to come down so we could take a picture to put in our newsletter.
Absolutely. Thank you. Vice Mayor Battle, you have our second presentation?
Yes, sir, Ms. Mayor. It gives me great pleasure this evening to present this certificate of recognition to DNA Labs International for their outstanding forensic research. For those of you all who don't know, the city of Deerfield Beach is very fortunate to have this company, which has been paramount in changing the game when it comes to cold case investigations nationwide by using their law-level DNA testing. The law-level DNA testing is much more sensitive and therefore a powerful tool for convicting the guilty and exonerating the innocent. The advanced technology assisted several law enforcement agencies in solving cases going back as far as 1973, thereby bringing cold case offenders to justice and allowing closure for grieving families and the community. Most recently, their low-level DNA analysis proved with 99.997 percent certainty that a suspect was the perpetrator of a 2004 rape and impregnation of a mentally disabled young woman. Thanks to this evidence, U.S. Marshals were able to intercept the perpetrator at the airport as he attempted to flee the country. DNA Labs founder Kirsten Charleston, could you please come forward? I must say this to the audience, don't mess with these ladies.
They're 90 percent women.
So where's the 10 percent?
Mayor Gans.
Go ahead. You going to go down?
We actually have 45 people now, and we have six men, the rest are women.
Yay!
We call this by protocol inherently.
We don't get the city manager, too?
Next up, we have a presentation from the Broward County Supervisor Elections Office regarding our March election, which will be one week from tonight, or today.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners and staff. My name is Geno Herring. I'm the voter education director for the Supervisor Elections Office. I come this evening to just speak a little bit about the election coming up next Tuesday, one week from today. Just most importantly is that there's a few things I just want to make sure everyone is aware of. Most importantly, of course, it is happening next Tuesday from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. There is no early voting, of course, for this municipal election. There's six other cities voting. The election, of course, is from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. You have several precincts here in Deerfield for Districts 1 and 2 for mayor, correct? Just want to make sure that everyone's aware of that. I'm sorry?
Just 1 and 2.
Right, just 1 and 2.
They're stuck with me for a little while longer.
Yes.
For Commissioner. Commissioner. So we want to make sure also that folks know their status. If they want to check their status, they don't know what district they're in, things like that. They can always go to our website, browardsoe.org. I also have on your cell phone for browardsoe.org, just click on what's my registration status, and you can find your district, you can find out exactly, you know, what party you're in, things like that. You can also make that change. If it was February 11th, that was the deadline to make that change, but as of right now, if you're registered to vote in those districts, you can vote. Okay? And again, that website is browardsoe.org. I believe you also have that link on your website directly, if folks can easily access that. So if there are any questions, I know you have a full agenda.
No. Thank you so much for being here.
Wonderful. This is my home city, so I wanted to make sure I was here to be there.
Outstanding. Thank you very much.
Thank you, brother.
Next up, we have a couple of certificates of appreciation. They're going to be presented to Allison Fitzsimmons and Ashley Malina for their hard work and dedication to the production of numerous city-hosted special events. Because the city of Deerfield Beach is proud to present these to them, these appreciations for their hard work, dedication, the production of several events that we've had over the past few months. Because since October, the city has hosted seven major special events, equating to 14 event days and numerous hours of planning and staging for them. The events have included the Fall Festival, the revamped Boots and Bourbon Festival, Beach Sounds, Ocean Way Holiday, MLK Weekend, Festival of the Arts, and Pioneer Days, just to name a few. These events not only bring the community together, they also bring those from outside our community into our great city. And the events continue to grow and continue to get better, putting Deerfield Beach on the map and recognized for all the great events that we do have. While these events are stacked on top of each other, Ashley and Allison have not missed a beat while they've been trying to keep their entire team together and working together as one team member. We're proud of the work that these ladies do for the city and continue to look forward to the production, growth, and overall success of the events that we have to come. So thank you both for your hard work and dedication towards the future. I did request of staff, well, first I'm going to go to this, and we just got this about an hour ago, and it's a major award, so I do want to bring this up, and we do not win an Oscar. But this came in today, and we were notified of this today. The city public affairs, the city of Deerfield Beach's Public Affairs and Marketing Department is the winner of two distinguished AVA digital awards. The AVA digital award is an international competition that is administered, and this is international, this is not just regional. It's administered and judged by the Association of Marketing and Communication Professionals, the AMCP. This organization consists of several thousand production, marketing, communication, advertising, public relations, and freelance professionals. The AMCP administers recognition programs, provides judges, and rewards outstanding achievement in service to the profession. Judges are industry professionals who look for companies and individuals whose talents exceed a high standard of excellence and whose work serves as a benchmark for the industry. This year, there were 2,500 entries from throughout the United States, Canada, and 23 other countries. Deerfield Beach was recognized with an honorable mentions for its production of Ricky the Recycling Ranger Fights Bad Guys plastic bags. And the city was recognized with a gold award for its episode Ricky the Recycling Ranger Teaches How to Reduce Use. Congratulations to our multimedia production specialist, Dave Hunt, marketing coordinator, Janine Pinoyar, and director Rebecca Medina Stewart for all of your part. Rebecca, Rebecca, give me the mic. Congratulations. Congratulations. City manager, we could have an update on the progress of the 15th Street Bridge for the public?
Yes. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Gans, Vice Mayor Battle, members of the city commission and general public. Mr. Good is going to, Mr. Good is going to provide a brief update regarding the 15th Avenue Bridge and what we've done thus far, and a estimated timeline. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, and a wonderful good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commission, to the public at hand. So we, on 15th Bridge, we have two parallel activities occurring simultaneously. One is to, you know, find the most quickest way to get that bridge under repair and back into operation, and the second is to figure out what is our long-term solution to that bridge. So in regards to the repairs of that bridge, we currently have Trans System Corporation under a contract. We have a PO to them in the amount of $25,000. They've begun work on designing the replacement of the, what we call the substandard barrier wall. We have to replace that entire wall, it's not just a fix, unfortunately. And we also are going to be replacing some of the guardrails that are on the approaches to that bridge. The construction plan, we expect to be within the 30 to 45 days, so they've given us a commitment to try to meet that goal. And we are currently working with both the attorney's office and the procurement office to find out, once the construction plan is done, what is the quickest way to actually award a contract to get that work started as quick as possible. And in regards to the bridge study, we have a work authorization and a purchase order delivered to the Carnehan, Procter, and Cross Incorporated Company. This work includes them, you know, looking at various options to mitigate what the current bridge condition is. We are currently working on a public involvement plan. Basically, what that means is, you know, public engagement, and we're looking at doing that in the early part of April. And once we complete that process, then we will be coming back to the commission with all of our findings for workshop.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. City manager, if there's any way, whatever we can do to try to expedite this and get the repair done, that's my biggest concern, so we can get that bridge reopened as soon as possible. Thank you.
Items 5, 6, and 7 are the quasi-judicial hearings. If anyone is going to testify on any one of these, would you please stand and raise your right hand so that I may swear you in? Do you sound much where the testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, help you, God? I'll ask each one to come forward, and as most of you may know, who have done this type of thing before, you have a right to a quasi-judicial hearing on these because they're quasi-judicial in nature, which would require, which would allow the right of cross-examination, a very formal procedure. Most people waive these type of things, and I'm going to ask whether you wish to do so. You are under no compulsion to do so. It is certainly your choice as the applicant. So the first case is case number five. The applicant is Seawood Builders, is the applicant here with, whoever the applicant, representing the applicant, would they please come forward and state your name, and whether you wish to waive the quasi-judicial processes? And then, Erica, are you going to make a brief for? Your name, please?
Betty Massey. Betty Massey, Seawood Builders.
Address, please.
1617 Southeast 6th Street, Deerfield Beach, Florida.
And do you waive the quasi-judicial hearing?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Do you have any presentation you wish to make?
No, I think we're pretty straightforward, and staff is going to present the project for you.
Good evening. Thank you. So tonight, the application is from JM Family. The intent of the building tonight is for, they're going to create a new building that is for their warehouse, storage, and internal services. The site plan is on the vacant space that's currently above you. You can see that the vacant space is for currently a parking and open space area. This is considered to be one site, so there is one existing building on the site. You see in your staff regarding, there were additional comments for the entire site that a later point, when they build the secondary building, or when they renovate the secondary building, they'll improve the area that's to the east. As you can see, the one-story proposed building and the additional parking that's being proposed. There's no new increase in existing services. This is existing uses and services that are currently part of the JM Family. This is just a new building in which they propose to house, again, their capital project management teams, their storage, their warehouse, their mailrooms, and things of that nature. Outdoor area for small landscaping projects and things like that. The landscaping is very consistent with the existing buildings that are on-site.
Is that the end of your presentation?
That is, that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Commission comments before we open to the public? Not seeing any, if you don't mind stepping aside for a minute. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item, item number five?
Dan Hurst, 330 Southeast 19th Avenue. I'm not opposed to the project, but as many of you know up here on the dais, I am a stickler for detail. And on page 15 of the application, which is entitled Development Permit Application Disclosure Affidavit, Betty Massey fails to give the dollar amounts of her contributions to the members of the commission and the mayor, nor does she mention any of her contributions to the commissioners through her numerous companies. And I just want to point out the inconsistency in the application of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public here to comment? Not seeing anyone, I'm going to close it to the public. City clerk, I think we have that addressed, can you?
I actually have to do the announcement prior to the vote, but since it was brought up, pursuant to ordinance 2009-006 Deerfield Beach Code of Ethics. Pursuant to ordinance 2009-006 Deerfield Beach Code of Ethics, Southeast Toyota and JM Family Enterprises made campaign contributions to Mayor Gans as disclosed in the agenda backup in February of 2017. Betty Massey made campaign contributions to Mayor Gans in the amount of $500 on February 15th, 2017, and $500 to Vice Mayor Battle's campaign on January 1st, 2019.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other commission comments?
Yeah, this is a wonderful company, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Madroski?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Item number six is the applicant across Community Churches, the, Mr. Hawk, are you here for? Would you please announce yourself, sir, and whether you wish to waive quasi-judicial process?
Jack Hawk, 125 Northeast 2nd Avenue, Deerfield Beach, and we do wish to waive.
Do you have a presentation to make, Mr. Hawk, or?
Any commission comments before we move forward?
I disclose I go to the church.
Anyone from the public here to comment on item number six? Not seeing anyone coming forward, I'm going to close the item. Commissioner Madroski?
Just real quick for staff, there's quite a bit of backup material to this. Have all the comments been addressed by the applicant?
Yes, at this time, all comments have been addressed.
Is that it, Commissioner Madroski?
That's all.
Okay. If there's not any other comments, we're looking for some sort of action here.
Okay.
I did open it to the public, knowing it came up.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Madroski?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Item number six is the applicant across Community Churches, the, Mr. Hawk, are you here for? Would you please announce yourself, sir, and whether you wish to waive quasi-judicial process?
Jack Hawk, 125 Northeast 2nd Avenue, Deerfield Beach, and we do wish to waive.
Do you have a presentation to make, Mr. Hawk, or?
No.
Any commission comments before we move forward?
I disclose I go to the church.
Anyone from the public here to comment on item number six? Not seeing anybody coming forward, I'm going to close the item. Commissioner Madroski?
Just real quick for staff, there's quite a bit of backup material to this. Have all the comments been addressed by the applicant?
Yes, at this time, all comments have been addressed.
Is that it, Commissioner Madroski?
That's all.
Okay. If there's not any other comments, we're looking for some sort of action here.
Okay.
I did open it to the public, knowing it came up.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Madroski?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Item number six is the applicant across Community Churches, the, Mr. Hawk, are you here for? Would you please announce yourself, sir, and whether you wish to waive quasi-judicial process?
Jack Hawk, 125 Northeast 2nd Avenue, Deerfield Beach, and we do wish to waive.
Do you have a presentation to make, Mr. Hawk, or?
No.
Any commission comments before we move forward?
I disclose I go to the church.
Anyone from the public here to comment on item number six? Not seeing anyone coming forward, I'm going to close the item. Commissioner Madroski?
Just real quick for staff, there's quite a bit of backup material to this. Have all the comments been addressed by the applicant?
Yes, at this time, all comments have been addressed.
Is that it, Commissioner Madroski?
That's all.
Okay. If there's not any other comments, we're looking for some sort of action here.
Okay.
I did open it to the public, knowing it came up.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have roll call, please.
Commissioner Madroski?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Item number seven is the applicant, is List Industries, is the applicant here? Would you please indicate your representation, whether you wish to waive quasi?
Good evening, Nectaria Chalkus with the firm Lockery in Chalkus, and we will waive the procedure.
Thank you. Do you have a presentation to make of any type?
I have one, if it's the wish of the commission, it's for me to present it, but I'm also happy to just answer questions.
Are any variants, does this comply with all Land Development Code requirements, Erica?
There are no outstanding items for this.
Okay, so you mean it's an application for modification to construct a 29,418 square foot multi-story addition to the existing building, meets all department requirements, all Land Development Code requirements, and I hear you to answer any questions.
Okay, we're going to open it to the public, and if they have some questions, we can come to you. Anyone from the public here to comment on item number seven? Not seeing anybody come forward, I'm going to close it to the public. Commission, we have any questions on this item?
Hearing no comments, I think this is another wonderful company in our city, and I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have roll call, please.
Commissioner Madroski?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone.
We have our public here.
All right, we are now on ordinance, item number eight, an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Deerfield Beach, Florida, mending city code section 66-78 requirements for parking stickers to modify the eligibility requirements for the purchase of city parking stickers, providing for codification, severability, conflict, and providing for an effective date. This has a number of changes requested by the commission. They are, in the agenda package highlighted, as you can see, there's a two-level system now. One is a more preferred parking, and it is a stricter residency requirement, and the other level is really kind of the same as it was prior for all of the parking. So it has been modified. The fee has not been modified, but the provisions mentioned have been.
So just in general, our understanding, the way this has been written, is that everything stays the same, with the exception of the second tier parking?
No, the first.
Excuse me, the first tier.
The first, yeah, it used to be uniform. Now you have two different tiers.
Right.
Level one parking sticker has very strict local residency requirements. You have current state of Florida registration indicating city of Deerfield Beach, vehicle registration indicating city of Deerfield Beach residential address, and a current state of Florida driver's license in the name of applicant indicating a city of Deerfield Beach address. That's the level one. Level two is basically, is in a different area, and it's basically the same requirements that you had before, so a little more lenient.
And the difference between the two levels that we have is level two, or level one, with the stricter requirements, will be allowed to park in the 40 spaces, or approximately 40 spaces?
Yes, that's correct. Designated spaces.
Designated spaces. In addition to the regular spaces- In addition to the regular spaces that they are allowed to?
That is, yes.
That is the only change. The level two will be allowed to park in all the same places they are now, with the exception of the forty. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. We have a list of people to speak. We have Peter Silberman is first, in the public.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. My name is Peter Silberman, and I'm a seasonal resident of forty Keswick B at Century Village, and have been a continuous taxpayer in Deerfield Beach since nineteen seventy-five. I am representing some forty to fifty people here tonight in the audience, and many more that are not here. I'm speaking in opposition to the proposed ordinance to change City Code Section sixty-six dash seventy-eight, which will modify the eligibility requirements for purchasing beach parking stickers. This proposed change is discriminatory. It creates two classes of residents, and it is unfair to the many seasonal taxpaying residents of Deerfield Beach who actually pay higher taxes than the year-round residents who qualify for an exemption. I love Deerfield Beach, and can't wait to come here every winter, and hate to leave when the season is over. But it is clear that you don't love me back, and are willing to go to discriminate against me. I pay my taxes, I pay fees, and I spend my money at local businesses, shops, and restaurants. But you don't really respect me or treat me with fairness when you are making your policies, all because I can't vote and am basically defenseless. We only use your facilities and require your support for part of the year, while others get to receive the benefit all year long. We don't begrudge them these benefits. They have paid for it, as have we seasonal residents and taxpayers, who have helped support the benefits they receive and they receive. In return, you are seeking to punish us and pit us against each other. That's just not right. I don't doubt that there is a parking permit, parking problem at the beach. I see it for myself whenever I go there. It is clear that there is a need for more parking. What I do object to is your proposal to make the special class of residents and shift a small portion of the problem onto us. All of your taxpayers deserve the benefit of having equal, equal access to all of the sixty beach parking sticker spaces. I was actively involved in this issue in two thousand thirteen, when you last considered denying your seasonal residents' access to the beach parking sticker program. And then, you wisely made the correct decision. You decided to treat all of your taxpaying constituents the same, as you should. Then you made the right and fair decision. Please, please do the same now. Reject this proposed change. Thank you.
Thank you. I certainly appreciate the passion behind it, but if we could please have silence in the audience as we go through all this. But feel free to stand up, that's a quiet way to show your support for it, if that's all right. We have Richard Rosenzweig up next.
Evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager. I stand before you, Richard Rosenzweig from Cookville, ninety-seven Farnham Avenue, Deerfield Beach. Basically, seconding what Mr. Silverman said, and I understand the need of these people, my Canadian residents who are behind me tonight, as I speak for them too, that I think it'd be in fairness to everybody, that we might look at the institute that we have in Sullivan Park. We have hourly parking, like four-hour breaks and that, where people can come in and stay at a meter, leave and come back. But also to free up meters so other people can use them during the week and during the day as well. That kind of a program would make it equitable for everybody, free it up for those who are here during the week that can use it, and those on the weekends when it's even more than the others. So, I wish you'd take that into consideration and try to equalize the situation, as they pay a lot of taxes, and I realize and recognize their wish to use the beach as much as others do. I can't say that I use it a lot myself, but I used to. And I'm hoping, I understand, or I heard, now if it's true or not, that the stickers can be used on meters without paying. Is that true?
We'll answer your questions at the end, if that's all right.
I appreciate that, okay? And so, thank you for listening. I hope you take this under consideration for these residents, and we look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Nathan Kurtzman?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Councilors. I'm a snowbird.
I'm sorry, Mr. Kurtzman, if you don't mind saying your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's Nathan Kurtzman. I reside at two oh one three Oak Ridge A in Century Village East, and have been a owner since the year two thousand. I have contributed my taxes on a yearly basis to the Broward County, and have supported the permit parking at the beach annually. I want to thank you very much for the twenty-five-dollar refund that we got this year, but I would have preferred that it not be returned to us, but to consider allowing us to park as it has been available to us in using the permit parking without any exemption, because we are not considered a full-time resident. The only difference that I feel that is, I don't have a Florida license plate, but my taxes are paid, and I believe that since I'm not a homesteader, our taxes are considered higher than people living here full-time. So, as Mr. Silverman said, and I appreciate everything he said, and I'm not for your consideration of reducing the parking spaces for us here in Deerfield Beach.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kurtzman. We have, and my apologies if I mispronounce your name, Danny Benzakar?
Good evening. My name is Danny Benzakar, and I live at twenty-eighty-six Oak Ridge U, Century Village. I would like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to present my findings of the last three days. I learned on March third that there is a proposal to change the current parking sticker system into a discriminatory two-tier system. I understand that some permanent residents would like to arrive at the beach parking and find an empty spot waiting for them. Who wouldn't want that? Except maybe the treasurer of the city of Deerfield. It is true that when permanent and seasonal resident, as well as tourist, are present, the parking lot is full at certain times of the day. Should permanent resident not go during the winter? Should seasonal resident be discriminated against? No, of course not. Then what is the solution? It is to be realistic, just as at a bridge, a bank, Publix, restaurants, et cetera. What do we do? We wait our turn. At any time of the day, there are people coming and also leaving the beach. We should all expect a waiting time of five, ten, fifteen minutes, or even sometimes twenty minutes. This is often less time than the waiting time at some restaurants, particularly if there is a special that day. My question to the city would be, why do you want to make us feel unwelcome in your city? We pay taxes, therefore, we should have the same privileges and obligations as the permanent residents. And as it was said once by the city, by the city, the permanent and seasonal residents should be treated the same. The same. Sticker for all, or stickers for none? Do you remember, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To support my reaction, the last three days, we discussed and obtained close to hundred fifty signatures from permanent residents, as I am going to give them to you. All these, here. All, with two exceptions, manifested disgust.
Mr. Benzakar, would you like another minute?
Yes, please, Mayor. All with two exceptions manifested disgust and shock towards this injustice. They all said, you pay taxes, you contribute to the economy, there is no reason why the city should treat you like second-class citizen. Some said, it is un-American. Others said, this is not who we are. And others said things that are not appropriate to repeat here. In conclusion, I respectfully request to leave things the way they are, and to ask everybody to be just, fair, cooperative, and patient. Here are the signatures that we could gather in one day or two days. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We have Mel Weinzeimer?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mel Weinzeimer. I live at two-two-nine Prescott L, Century Village, Deerfield Beach. I'm a property owner, a taxpayer, and a seasonal resident. I've been a taxpayer here since the year two thousand and eight, and I'm a snowbird. I'm speaking in opposition to the proposed change. I not only represent myself, but I represent over six hundred seasonal residents who have signed a petition against your proposed change. I spoke to this commission on this issue in two thousand thirteen, when you made a fair and just decision to treat the seasonal residents fairly and equally. When we heard about the proposed change, we had only a week to organize our response. We started a petition. It took only one person one and a half days to collect over six hundred signatures from seasonal residents in opposition to this ordinance change. That's the level of concern that exists in the seasonal community. The word "snowbird" used to be a cute way to refer to seasonal residents, and we were welcome, because we financially support the community, without making a demand on your services during more than half of the year. We vitalize your local economy. But now, the message you're sending with your proposed changes to the ordinance would make "snowbird" a derogatory term. I want to present this petition to you, signed by over six hundred seasonal residents. It reads as follows. Mr. Mayor and City Councilors, as Deerfield Beach property owners, we take great offense to hear that our rights as taxpayers may be infringed upon. Indeed, we chose to live here five or six months out of the year, and consequently, are paying taxes at a higher rate than permanent Deerfield residents. We feel that we are part of the community, and as such, deserve fair and just treatment. We contribute to the economy by paying taxes and frequenting many businesses, including but not limited to restaurants, stores, gyms, and home maintenance services. We urge you to maintain the current beach sticker system without affecting restrictive changes. Thanking you in advance for keeping our city fair and just. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, City Clerk, thank you. Anuk Benzakar?
Hi. Mr. Mayor, Ms. Vice Mayor, and esteemed Commissioners, my name is Anuk Benzakar. I'm a seasonal resident at twenty-eighty-six Oak Ridge U, and happen to be an attorney. I feel that the proposed change to the requirements for beach sticker eligibility would reopen a can of worms that we all believed had been sealed and buried in twenty thirteen. If accepted, the change would be divisive in the community, and would cause more problems than it would solve. Allow me to elaborate. First of all, according to some Americans that I spoke with over the last few days, what is being proposed to the council is unconstitutional and not the American way. So, I did a bit of research, and found that indeed, the Constitution of the state of Florida applies to the situation. More particularly, Section Two demands and assures equality before the law, and Section Twenty-five of this Constitution demands and assures the fair treatment of taxpayers. As you know, equality before the law is a fundamental principle of the United States. No individual or group of individuals should be privileged or discriminated against. So, the same sticker parking eligibility criteria must be offered to all Deerfield taxpayers, and a two-tier system within the taxpayers must be avoided at all costs, because it is unjust, an unfair treatment, and thus unconstitutional. Seasonal residents pay taxes. The fact that we pay higher taxes than permanent residents is perhaps relevant, perhaps not, but either way, what is important is that we do pay taxes. The purpose of taxes is to pay for services provided by the county and the city to which we pay taxes, one of them being municipal parking lots. All taxpayers must thus equally benefit from the services offered and paid for by their taxes. Seasonal residents pay taxes year-round, even though we don't benefit from these services for six to nine months out of the year. But no distinction is made with permanent residents, because that's the law. By taking away beach parking spaces from seasonal residents, this pushes us to the metered spaces, and thus would cause the city to lose revenue from those meters. What's to stop permanent residents from using the twenty seasonal parking spots first? This would leave snowbirds with no spots whatsoever, other than the meters, further reducing the city's meter revenues. The proposed change is quite frankly insulting, is contrary to the law, is contrary to good business, and it's unconstitutional. So, I urge you to please reject the proposal before you.
Thank you. Michelle Pouliot?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. My name is Michelle Pouliot. I live in Deerfield Beach, Century Village, fifty-eight Ventnor C. While I fully endorse whatever my colleagues from CVE has told in terms of discrimination, well, a simple logic here, as I understand, you know, would help me to, to make the following point. I'm not here six months, you know, or more than half of the time during a year. So, am I creating the problem with parking spots? I don't think so. When there's no logic in order to implement such by law, it gives room to discrimination as it was stated earlier. So, I fully endorse and obviously vote against the proposed change of the, thank you very much.
Thank you. That includes those who have signed up. Anyone else in the public here to comment on this item? Just come up one at a time, please. Name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the Commissioners. Everyone here, you're going to be able to witness political emulation right before your eyes.
Name and address for the record.
Hmm?
Your address?
Oh, I'm sorry, twenty Westbury A. I've done my research, I walked the four lots, and.
Mr. Savinsky, can you give your name, please?
Sorry, David Savinsky.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Okay, I've done my research, and I've walked the four lots that are listed on the public sheet and on the website. My count is three hundred and ten spaces, not counting handicap spaces. Of these spaces, forty-two are currently designated as sticker-only spaces. Now, virtually nothing is going to change for the vast majority of annual pass purchasers. The only change is a small. The only change is a small 13% carve-out that would make those 42 spaces currently available to all holders only available to full-time residents of Deerfield Beach. Now, with the recent 25% reduction in the fee, the annual passholders are getting a terrific value and a convenience. Actually, if they're regular users, they will save well over $100 a year. While the 13% carve-out would afford local citizens, a well-deserved benefit as well. Carve-outs have a long history as a way for federal, state, and local governments to provide extra benefits to their constituents. A few examples would be not requiring a fishing license if you're over 65 years old in Florida, reduced or free state park passes for veterans, or the Senior Lifetime National Park Pass. The list goes on. Now, these are not only wonderful benefits, but they are politically defensible. But I was thinking about the notion of carve-outs. The actual carve-out that took place was in 2013, when there was a huge carve-out made for our visitors. So carve-outs happen on all levels. Discrimination actually has been happening to the permanent residents for years. We've taken a backseat many times, and we're glad to do it. We appreciate our visitors. Permanent residents contribute more in taxes throughout the course of the year with license plates, car registration, any sales or service that we use. We're involved in the community. We have a vested interest. We create and support local businesses. The power of the vote is a hallowed tradition, and everyone is entitled to participate in the process of representative governance within their chosen home. But it would be a mockery to expect that you should have that privilege wherever you hang your hat. I believe the two-tier system is both administratively simple to do and simple to enforce. We're talking about 13%. We're not talking about running people out of town, not giving them a chance to park. But I do have to say, overall, I've been very impressed with the city officials' ability to work towards compromise solutions.
Would you like another minute?
Please. To compromise solutions that are both sensible and fair. Thank you.
Thank you.[762.41][762.41](APPLAUSE). Anyone else in the public here to comment? Item number nine? Or person number nine?[771.82][771.82]7111.
Good evening, I'm recording.
You might want to wait till you're up at the mic, but good evening.
Good evening. My name is Danielle Norman. Do you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. I'm a citizen of Deerfield Beach, especially Century Village, 3052 Cambridge C. My question is very simple. When we got your message, it was not clear at all for a lot of us. When we take... By the way, I've been a sticker, a beach sticker for a long time. I see that there are sticker spots in the main parking, none in the firemen and none in the embassy, but whenever those stickers are filled, we're allowed to park anywhere where we want. Correct or not?
Correct.
Correct. Is... Will even one-third, two-thirds, if you decide to stay on, which I feel like all my compatriot is very unfair, are we gonna be able to park anywhere as usual? Is my question clear?
Yes, ma'am. We will give you an answer to that at the end. Yes.
Not right now?
Not right now.
Okay, I'll wait.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public here to comment on this item? No, the brave souls? All right, then we're gonna close it to the public then. Just for clarification on that, could you mind providing some clarification for that question?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Gantz. So number one, the Level 1 would be in the designated sticker spaces only. Level 1 and Level 2 stickers would be able to park at any other spot. So regardless of whether it's filled, whether the designated spaces are filled or not, so if you have a sticker and you park at a non-designated spot in one of those four parking lots, which are behind the fire station right off of Hillsborough Boulevard, the small one, the main beach parking lot, and Embassy Suites, you would not get ticketed and would not be required to pay there. But if you parked along Ocean Way, then that would be a violation.
Does that answer your question, ma'am? Did that answer your question? Excellent. Okay. Commissioner Parnas?
It seems all of the people that got up and spoke against this motion or this ordinance are my constituents. And I hear you. You may not be able to vote for me, but that doesn't mean you're wrong. It doesn't mean you should be treated unfairly. I represent you as well as permanent residents and citizens, whether you're a snowbird, a Canadian, you come from France, Africa, or anywhere else. I treat all of my constituents equally, and I hear your pain. I also realize that your dollar, if you come from Canada, is worth 75 cents of an American dollar. So when you pay $1,000 in real estate taxes, it costs you $1,250 of Canadian money to pay $1,000 in taxes compared to me, who's a permanent resident and pay $500 for the same real estate. I'm not going to support this. I'm not gonna support it because I think over a few parking spaces, we're making a mountain out of a molehill.[1024.54][1024.54](APPLAUSE). Please, please, hold your comments. I don't see how it's gonna change the big parking problem we have at the beach to any amount that'll make a change. We need probably a $30 million municipal parking lot that's six stories high somewhere near the beach, and maybe that's down the road. But in the meanwhile, we have a problem, and I don't see taking it out on the part-time residents who come here every year, spend their money in our city, make it a better place, contribute to our life here, and support us for this to go through. So I vote no.
Thank you, Commissioner.[1088.33][1088.33](APPLAUSE). Commissioner Miller?
Yes, I was here 2013, and as I listened to the comments, and when I heard David, the other one spoke for this pending ordinance, I think David made a case against it because it's such a small percentage, 13%. This is not gonna change a thing, and it's gonna bring a lot of people thinking we're unhappy. It's not gonna change anything. And I walk at the beach daily. So I'm with my friend from District 3, and I'm opposed to this. I think we should leave it a level playing field for everybody, happy to have the $75 instead of $100, and God bless you, and I'm gonna vote against it.
Thank you.[1141.15][1141.15](APPLAUSE). Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I don't know how I'm gonna vote on this one way or the other, but I've been sitting here trying to pull up some data on this and looking at one beach in Toronto, Eastham Beach, $50 a week for a beach sticker. And we're charging how much? That's, you know, that's something to be considered, one way or the other, in terms of the cost of what we're having our citizens and our residents pay. However, my ultimate choice in this, if I had it to do myself, beach parking would be absolutely free. That's what I grew up under. You went to the beach. If you got a space out there to park, fine. If you didn't, you stayed home or you came back and you went to the beach, one way or the other. And that's my two cents on the issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Battle. Commissioner Drosky?
Yeah, I actually had my comments and opinions formed before tonight, before all the speakers. I actually had all my comments prepared before coming tonight, and I... Let me start by saying, I don't believe for a second that what's being proposed is discriminatory, that we're treating others as second-class citizens. I think we're allowed to, and we can create different tiers if we so chose to. You know, there is a benefit to full-time residents living here in the city of Deerfield Beach. One person said that it was unconstitutional, and as an attorney myself, I highly disagree with that concept. We give benefits to Florida residents versus out-of-state residents all the time. We give in-state tuition breaks to those students that attend Florida colleges. We give breaks to Florida residents who adopt Florida children. You get free tuition and you get health care if you adopt Florida children. You get hunting and fishing license privileges that the out-of-state members don't get. So we do this all the time. This is nothing new that we're proposing tonight. However, what I haven't heard, and I only heard it from one speaker in passing, and that I have a problem with, is the enforcement. And nobody has talked about enforcement tonight and how we're going to apply this Level 1 tier versus this Level 2 tier, because we can't have parking enforcement out there all the time, looking at every single space that we have out there. And to me, that is the problem. We, as a commission, have said from day one since I joined that we're not going to pass something that we can't enforce or reasonably enforce, and I don't see this being enforced to the level that it's gonna make a big difference in the city. I'm all for the, you know, giving full-time residents benefit, but if we can't come up with a reason or a reality to make it work, I think, you know, fair across the board, then I wouldn't really be in favor of this. So I was on first reading in favor of it. I don't think we can enforce it, so I'm not gonna be in favor of it tonight.[1338.47][1338.47](APPLAUSE).
I'd like to call a question.
You mind if I speak on it? Look, and with all due respect, Commissioner, you're the one that brought this back in many ways. You're the... We talked about this, and I told you, "You sure you wanna do this, Joe?" And you said yes. Hold on, it's my turn to speak, and you're going against it. That's okay. It's your last meeting here with us formally, so that's all right.[1366.47][1366.47](LAUGHTER). I still love you. It's okay. But I warned you that this is gonna happen, because I've been here before, and I've been here with many of you before, okay? And I have changed my position back in 2013 when we first had this come in front of us. But things have changed a little bit. Now, first off, let's talk about what other cities do, because other cities do this. This is not uncommon. Fort Lauderdale, you need a registration and a driver's license that match the home in Fort Lauderdale to get your pass. Miami Beach has a two-tier pricing program, and if you're considered a second... If you're considered a non-full-time resident, the price is actually double what the full-time residents have to pay. In Hollywood, they require a registration and driver's license to be in Hollywood, Florida. Boynton Beach, they have a $50 charge for residents. If you're a qualified non-resident, it's a $200 charge. Lake Worth, there's 50 spots, 40 for full-time residents, 60 for seasonal residents, different in the price in which they charge. Stanford, Connecticut, charges $25 for residents, $110 for non-registered residents that have places there. It's not just Florida. North Hampton, New Hampshire, there's a 2010 article, 20 spots is all they're fighting over. Total is what they have for everyone. They sell them for $35 a year. They sell 800 stickers a year for 20 spots. You have to be registered with your motor vehicle in that city. Seabrook, New Hampshire, they have resident and non-resident. This is not unusual. Other cities do it, not just in the state of Florida, not just in Broward County, but all across and up and down, wherever there's an ocean, it seems like. Parking is at a premium, and it is an issue. It is a fine line. It's a delicate balance because it is not meant, the way some people have taken it, to be an insult to those of you who are not full-time residents. It is not a slap in the face. As a beach town, we love our snowbirds, and we need you, but just as much as you need us. Because the services and all the great services that we have here in the city of Deerfield Beach, and the restaurants that you visit on a part-time basis, are here because of the people that are here year-round that keep them going when you're not. All right? I look at this more as a loyalty rewards program. I think it is a minor imposition that we take... We carve out 42 spaces, I believe it is, for full-time residents as a loyalty rewards program for someone who is here year-round. So when we try to position our construction that we do within the city of Deerfield Beach, and we try to do that out of season, so it doesn't affect all of you, and it doesn't jam up our traffic when we know the population increases, the people that are here year-round are stuck dealing with that on a regular basis. Like I said, I don't take the position, and I certainly don't appreciate the position that some people have taken with saying that, you know, "If the Canucks don't like it, they can kiss my blank." For a hotel owner in Deerfield Beach to say that, I think it's disgusting, and it's the wrong message. That's not what we're trying to say, and that's not what we're trying to do here. But what we are trying to do is trying to relieve some of the issues we have down at the beach and try to get the people that are here full-time, who are, in my opinion, contributing a great deal. I know the percentages are different, but I think they deserve it, and I think for them, 40 spaces is not too much to ask for. So I do support this, and I do that with a great deal of respect and not trying to be disrespectful, because we love you, and we want you here, and we fight like hell to keep you here. But this is one thing that we need to make an exception on, in my opinion. We keep the price the same. You're allowed to park everywhere. You can park now, with the exception of those 42 spots. That's it. I will say this. Does anybody else smell smoke up here? Something's on fire up here, and it's not my pants, I promise you, because I'm not lying. We definitely have something on fire. Let's test our great services that we have. Can we have anybody from Fire Rescue come up?
No, I am smelling it.
Definitely electrical. Well, if you guys do me a favor, if you see smoke behind us, at least warn the attorneys to get them out of here, and the rest of us can burn out.[1647.11][1647.11](LAUGHTER). So we'll move forward. With that said, is anyone going to make a motion? No? All right. I will do it. Well, we can either kill it...
I can make a motion to deny this.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to deny. So voting for... Voting in affirmative on this would actually...
Is no on the ordinance.
Is no on the ordinance, okay? We have rule call, please.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
No.
Mayor Gantz?
No. Thank you. So what that means to all of you, it remains exactly the way it is right now.[1696.01][1696.01](APPLAUSE). We're gonna take a five-minute recess. We can find out what's burning and let you all clear out, if you'd like. Thank you. Come back in five minutes, if we could, please. Good. It smells like it's regular. (APPLAUSE). Hey, sweetheart, how are you? I promise you, next month, I'm gonna come by and do a little something so I can see you all over again.[1727.82][1727.82](LAUGHTER). Hey sweetheart, how are you? I promise you, next month, I'm going to come by and do a little something so I can see you all.
Well, she did go to B.C., but she got an emergency call to take care of her three-year-old granddaughter. She has their issues. The grandparents take care of her, okay, but they're both sick. So she's got to... It's good, because she's connecting, you know? Rather than go through everything in the house, she's with her friends.
What else could we have on the agenda tonight?
Test, test.
Is that one good?
I still smell it.
I'd say do I.
But you're going to smell it, you know, if you have an electrical... Then you're going to smell it.
Are you sure?
No, no.
Let's just get the, get a fire.
It's just your chair.
What's that?
It's just your chair.
It's just electric.
Okay.
Mayor's chair.
All right.
It's the mayor's chair.
Was it really? No.
It's just the chair. Sir, what it is, is the chair for years.
Oh, okay. Okay.
It says the lights still work.
All right. Sir, are we, we're going to keep it extended, break?
Yeah, it can't leave, because we're just actually...
So what do I need to do? Bring it to recess?
No, 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 just wait.
Keep it in recess.
It's going.
I know, I know. I say trendy.
Yeah, yeah. I know they have those.
No, it's not that fancy. After what she just called me about, it's not that fancy.
I know. Right, right.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to go ahead and bring back our, restart our meeting. Thank you for your patience. We have, we're not 100%, but we're still going to move forward here. This is the city attorney. Okay, bear with us one moment as we move forward with that. We have the fire department. They are going to come take a look at us. We think we may have addressed what the issue is. If there's a, if it becomes hazardous, obviously, we'll clear the room and do what we have to do. Anybody know where the city attorney went?
Anthony, do you just want to read, or I can read it for you if you'd like, Mr. Mayor.
Anthony, do you mind? We have our assistant city attorney.
We are on public comment.
Yes.
Persons addressing the commission still state his or her name and address and may speak for three minutes unless extended for one additional minute by the mayor. Just a reminder, our remarks regarding agenda items that are currently on the agenda should be made at the time that the agenda item is called. This is for items that are not on the agenda. No comment shall be made related to the personal life or personal qualities of any person, and no language which will offend persons of ordinary sensibility shall be permitted.
Excellent. Thank you. Do we have anybody to sign up to speak?
Yes, one person.
Joe Hines? I'm sorry, Mr. Hines first. He signed up to speak. You can be second if you'd like.
I was sort of didn't need to sign up.
Sorry. Mr. Hines, you're first.
My name is Joe Hines. I'm at 559 Northwest 47th Terrace. As soon as you get your hand out, I'll start talking. Okay, looking at sheet number one, I'd like to read something to you and have you absorb it a little bit. Back to the, this is all our budget-related financial information. Couple, yeah, back in 2018, the manager presents a letter when he presents the budget, and this page was from that letter. It was signed by the manager and the financial director. And I quote here, "The creation of a stormwater enterprise fund is essential to allow use of funds to compete with these projects without more burden on the general and road and bridge funds." So he's talking about putting the burden on the road, general fund and road and bridge fund. And then lower down there, you see, he mentions a burden on property tax revenues, which could eventually result in a millage rate increase or cuts in other vital services. Those remarks, to me, indicate there's some revenue shortages, shortfalls, whatever. Go over to page two. Now, when you look at page two, on page one, he was talking about taking money out of the road and bridge fund to pay for stormwater improvements. But here on page two, you notice inter-fund transfers were about the same year. They transferred, and you'll see 7.891, I call it $8 million, from a couple of enterprise funds over to the general fund, which I find, you know, he's talking about taking it out, the first one, killing him, and all of a sudden, he's got $8 million coming in on the back door. Now, go over to page three, please. On page three, if you look at all the financial statements over the years, I've got highlighted 2018 for the general fund and road and bridge fund. And the unencumbered funds for 2018 for general fund was $6.5 million. And for the road and bridge fund was .852 million dollars. Totaled together was $7.3 million that was left over on those funds, according to your data. So there obviously wasn't any apparent dire consequences from any withdrawals for stormwater. Now, if you'll go over to page four, back in December, this past December, the city issued a statement, and it's a schedule, five-year schedule capital improvements. Now, if you look at the first three items atop, RO process train, nanofiltration process train, and east water treatment plant site improvements. RO process train, that's reverse osmosis. That's when you take the salt out and clean up the water. Then a nanofiltration is also part of cleaning water. And the east filtration's site improvements. Now, what the heck is that? Can I have another minute?
Yes, you can.
The, I just wondered what that had to do with flooding of streets, because that's how this whole issue was sold to us. Now, you go over to page five. You'll see for the year 2018, over on the, on the right-hand side, you'll see $53 million, $53 million and $36 as an unencumbered balance. And when you go to the 2019 budget, you'll see the city had a carryover of $13 million. So I've just kind of wondered what happened to that $40 million unencumbered. If that was real money, or how do you get $53 million, but it only carried over the $13 million? If I could get an answer to that question. And of course, we've got page six as the city has $63 million in total investments, and that's up from $23 million in 2013. And that also expresses my concern about lack of money.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I don't think we have anybody else signed up. Sir?
David Cohen, 953 Southeast 6th Street, Deerfield.
Can you speak into the microphone, Mr. Cohen?
I thought I am. No?
You might be. You might have to speak a little louder. I'm sorry.
All right. Well, now I can hear you better than I could hear you from back there. I came here, not like Caesar. I came here to praise you. Since this is your last visit. I have been in Deerfield Beach as a permanent resident for about 40 years. And this commission is the first one, the very first one, that has no crooks, no argument, and works in a collegial way. And it is a blessing. I know that I don't have your attention. You're all looking down at something here, but I'm saying nice things about you and to you.
Taking notes.
Thank you. Be nice to see you guys when we talk. Thank you. You're a bright light. We've really not had anybody, well, most of the time, not vote his own interests or something that were for his buddies. There has been absolutely no question about integrity. But I have to admit, sometimes I feel like Gulliver when I hear you arguing about which end of the egg to crack. But we're not in Lollapalooza, we're in Deerfield. You don't go to war. You work it out, and you move forward. And that's how you have progressed. And I do hope and pray it continues, because we had bedlam. We had chaos. We had crooks. We had all kinds of things going on in the city of Deerfield Beach over the last 40 years, until this commission. Solid. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Rita Massey, 349 Northeast 19th Avenue. I want to give a kudos and a great shout-out to Andrea Carnavalli, sitting here, the owner of Barracuda, because on Sunday night, she put on a carnival, Carnavalli celebration in Deerfield Beach that was second to none, okay? People came up from Miami, from Fort Lauderdale, from Pompano, from Boynton Beach. It was such a party. It was wonderful. Here, this little mother of five dragged all these people here from all over. And I think that we should have a yearly event here for carnival. By the way, happy carnival, everybody. And I'm sporting my hat that Ms. Peggy Nolan bought for me when she was in New Orleans last year. She saw the hat, and she said, "Oh, this is definitely a Rita hat." So I'm wearing it in her honor tonight. But I think... But, I think Rebecca, we should have a carnival yearly event here, and we should party in the streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Just your name and address for the record.
Hello, everybody, my name is Julie Rodriguez, I live at 150 Southeast 7th Street in Deerfield Beach. Just a couple of things. At the last meeting, Mayor, I asked you a question, and unfortunately, it wasn't addressed, I'm going to ask it again. At the beginning of the meetings, we have this award and recognition, which these people are very well-deserved. However, I don't know why they have it in the evening, okay? These people that were here, they leave, you know, at seven o'clock, you know, I don't know why you can't have it nine to five, Monday through Friday. That's just one of the things I just wanted to bring up. Another thing, I went to dfb.city today, and it says that voting is March 2nd, so that needs to be updated on your website. I just checked it again, and I have it on my phone. Also, I called the city of Deerfield on Wednesday, and I asked them, "When is the election?" And I was told it was March 5th, when I called, I personally called. Okay. Another thing is about leadership. When I asked you, Mayor, about when I called Mr. Burgess, and I never got a call, and you said that he delegates the duties, which is wonderful. However, I've been trying to reach Environmental Services for over a month. I spoke to Shannon about five times, and I'm waiting for her to get back to me. It's been a month, and unfortunately, they haven't delegated duties. So, I'm still waiting for an answer. Another thing I wanted to bring up, Mayor, is, I know, as the mayor of Deerfield Beach, we should all respect you, and vice versa. At the last meeting that we had, a citizen came up and asked you a question, and it was regarding the budget or something like that. And he asked you something about paperwork. And your answer to him, and I say, and I'm in quote, "I don't have it in my back pocket." I don't think that was very nice, Mr. Mayor. Lastly, I just want to remind everyone on the dais that we, as residents and citizens of Deerfield Beach, we are the employer. We elect you, so you are our employees, okay? And I would like for all of you to listen till we have something to speak, because you are elected officials, and you never know when that can end. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
John Tishak, 1325 Southwest 1st Terrace, Deerfield Beach, I love Deerfield Beach. But I also like a good night's sleep. I'm self-employed, we got a cold front coming in tonight, I like to have my bedroom window open, free air conditioning's great on the budget. But this Brightline train and all these stinking horns that go off at all different hours whenever they want, I'd really like, and I can't encourage you enough, to get this horn thing from, from 10 o'clock, 9 o'clock, to 7:00 in the morning. I don't see any purpose behind it, and like, like especially on Friday nights, when I'm getting ready for, to go to my synagogue on Saturday, and that Brightline has woken me up at quarter of 11. Somewhere along the line, we need to be able to give our residents a good night's rest. My business is doing very well, and I thank Deerfield Beach for that, but nothing can replace a good night's rest, so I can't encourage you enough. Get rid of this train horn late night, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else in the public? Yes.
Good evening. My name's Andrea Carnavalli, or Carn Valley, but you can call it Carnavalli. The address on Barracuda is 1965 Northeast 2nd Street. So, I'm here just to, I'm representing all the Brazilians. I've been a resident of Deerfield Beach for over 30 years now, and I now have a business, a restaurant on the island, for almost five years. And I think that's amazing that we can bring more of the Brazilian fever here. As far, as long as when Barracuda started about eight years ago, was nothing like it is right now. Since I bought Barracuda, I love people, I love interacting with all the Brazilians, all the Americans. I was impressed with the little advertisement that I did only for this carnival, just for us, to bring the children, like my children, my grandson, my daughter here tonight, and their friends came over, it was like, it was so packed. I had a van came from, all the way from Orlando to celebrate this carnival. I think you should consider giving us Brazilians, which I think is like 45% of the population in Deerfield Beach, an opportunity for us to have a festival, and let us go and party on the street once a year at least, with the feathers and happiness, and bring all the Americans, the Canadians, whoever's in town, to celebrate this amazing thing, Madigra Carnival. Today is our last day in Brazil, tomorrow is like Ash Day for us, Wednesday, and since there's Italian festivals, festivals on the beach, and all I can see, like I went to the carnival with my children for Santa Broses, half were Brazilians. We are Brazilians, we're here to support you, no matter what. I want to make this city the best, and we're here to support all of you, regardless of politicians and size or anything else, with sides, we just want to have Brazil. Look, we already in front of oceans and JBS. We are a Brazilian party, left is Brazil, right is American, we're all together, and I'm here to represent my people, and so are the Americans, 50/50, that's what I believe. Give us a chance to show us who we are, and how much we can do for Deerfield Beach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else in the public?
John Slattery, 1455 Southeast 5th Place, Deerfield Beach. First, thank you, Mayor and Commission, for the help you've given us on the traffic going through our little part of the neighborhood due to reroute of the 15th Avenue Bridge. I'm going to make a few statements tonight and then arrive at a few questions that I hope to have answered, I might need the extra minute tonight for the first time ever. I care deeply about this city. I joined the cultural committee soon after my wife and I moved in, and I've been involved in helping the city in one way or another since I moved back here to Deerfield Beach about six years ago. I first lived here back in the 80s. I attended my first commission meeting soon after I moved in to get a feel for how the city was managed. I spoke up at a couple of times early on and was frustrated how I was treated if I questioned anything. So, I did what most people do, I stopped attending the commission meetings out of frustration. Around that time, I'd met up with some other community-minded people, and we started a group called Deerfield Dreams, it's a corny name, I know. We could, wanted to have a combined voice to be able to affect some change in small but positive ways. We were working on things like creating bike routes that would avoid being on high-traffic roads, getting trees planted along our main roads in the Cove residential area to be more tree-lined, like Lighthouse Point, and other ideas, like dog parks and movies by the beach. We were working with some folks in the city government and starting to make some progress, until one of our board members, who was also on the firefighter pension committee, or whatever that's called, questioned the wrong people about something about the pension, and people from the old guard of this area started to attend our Deerfield Dream meetings and making it very unfriendly. The gentleman from our group was removed from his seat on the pension board, or whatever that's called, and pretty much driven into moving away. That was my first experience with seeing the core group of long-timers who are very well-engrained in the fabric of this community, and are doing very well financially with maintaining the status quo. That was right about the time that the mayor wanted to have a chat with me in my driveway one afternoon, so now you understand the context of that interaction. I bought my house at a good price, and I'm very happy with my purchase. What is the problem is that my house isn't very big, and it's not on the water, and has an annual tax bill of over $8,000 per year. It takes a lot of appreciation of property value to keep ahead of that overhead. The backstory on that is the annual operating budget for the city has increased by about 50% since I moved back. This is in spite of having outsourced multiple departments and even having reduced staff by over 100 a few years ago. I try to understand what is happening with our city's spending and long-term obligations, because I am literally invested in this city. This has, city has a looming problem and is conflicted with how to address the debt problem. There are long-timers who bought their houses years ago, say, back in the early 90s, a house on the inner coastal could be bought for under $200,000. Now, nearly 30 years later, that house has a tax bill of barely $3,000. People have moved within the city and have portability of their homestead, also have very low tax obligations. The problem is for people like me and my new neighbors who are literally getting slammed with inordinate tax bills to support things like the looming wave of nearly 50 firefighters, many whom have gamed the pension system, may I have my other minute, please? And are getting pensions of in excess, well excess of $100,000 per year, and the city employees and the upper management who are getting pay raises of 30 and 50% over the past few years. There are very few citizens who really want to understand and participate in how this city is being managed and is managing our investments, AKA our property. When I and some others get up here to ask questions about finances in the cities, because we care. We're frustrated by the lack of straight answers, and the structure of this exchange will now allow the mayor to choose to answer my questions, or not, a few minutes from now. All mixed with other questions from other citizens, he can and often does reframe my questions in a different context and ask a question that I didn't in fact ask, rather than the question I did ask. So, my questions, which I've also handed to you, have you ever approached me or anyone else from the Deerfield Beach, We the People of Deerfield Beach, after a meeting to try to better understanding of our questions or concerns? I'm re-asking the question from two weeks ago, or last meeting, you received from me, you avoided answering, "Who's responsible for coordinating all of the firefighters from outside of our city to influence our local district elections?" Do you have my questions?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public?
Glenn Zoller, 2377 Deer Creek Trail, Deerfield Beach. At the last commission meeting, the mayor addressed the store-all on the corner of Hillsborough and Dixie, also referred by some as the monstrosity. Mayor Gantz explicitly stated, "They bought the property, they did everything they were supposed to do, and it was an allowed usage." After looking at, spending a lot of time looking at numerous videos, minutes, and agendas, I feel fairly confident that what we heard was the exact opposite of what city documentation shows. Yes, there was a variance given for the building at the 19 April 2016 commission meeting. No, the property was not zoned for this use. The commission voted the change to zoning from transportation to commercial use at the 17 November 2015 commission meeting. And yes, the distillery was in the design used to request the rezoning and variances, at least in the two commission meetings I mentioned. And who voted yes for both the variance and the rezoning? Mayor Gantz and Vice Mayor Battle were both on the commission at the time, and both approved these changes that made the building of this monstrosity right in the middle of the city a reality. It should have been a wake-up call when a storage company came calling, because there were far better uses of such a prime property. So, now we have a storage building for an anchor to Pioneer Grove. Store-all contributed significantly to the mayor's campaign, not the first for the commission, but the mayor's campaign. And 10 days after the vice mayor said she did not take a dime from store-all, she accepted $2,000. I give both the mayor and the vice mayor four Pinocchios for the bending of the truth. These kind of things really should be done by the papers that we have here, but evidently, they're in somebody's back pocket.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Dan Hurst, 330 Southeast 19th Avenue. I really don't have a lot tonight, I would be remiss if I didn't wish Commissioner Joe Miller a fond farewell. Also, just two points I wanted to mention. Just in getting the final part of the story out regarding Charlie DeBrusco and the city's case with Betty Jean Crump, we know what the city had to pay out, but we don't, didn't hear any discussion about what the legal fees were, so I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. The city paid out a grand total of approximately $70,000 in legal fees on this case. And the thing that I find very interesting is that of that $70,000 that the city paid out, $14,000 of that went to Mr. DeBrusco's attorney, a gentleman by the name of Scott J. Edwards. So, I find that interesting. The other thing I just wanted to mention is with all of my campaign travels, I've been a lot in the Cove Shopping Center, and all of the parking lines in the Cove Shopping Center have disappeared. So, people are forced to try to navigate just by the bumper, because the white lines have totally disappeared in the vast majority of the parking lot. So, I just wanted to call that to the proper people's attention. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the public here to speak? Not anybody from the public, I'm going to close it? We can go to item nine, and we'll come back, and we can answer some of these questions. No, I just wanted to get some of these questions, if that's all right. I don't know what the question was from Mr. Hines, quite frankly, but we're happy to let you sit down with staff to maybe address what the issues are. I didn't quite make out what your question was, it was a little confusing for me. As far as a yearly event, great idea for the carnival. We also have special event process, they can come and fill out an application, the Italian festival is put on by an outside organization, Rotary, that put that together. If they want to put something together, they're more than happy to fill out the application and move that forward. As far as Mr. Rodriguez, your comments, your recommendation about the awards and recognitions, one of the things, you're new to the meetings, but there's people that have come before you that have said, "We don't do enough of that in the city of Deerfield Beach." When we have these business meetings, we don't recognize people within the community. Having it during the daytime doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me, to have a special meeting just to do that, when we have that. We are trying to streamline it a little bit, we'd like to do the photos before the meeting starts, if possible. We've had a hard time coordinating it, but that's why we do it, it's because the people have requested that we recognize and do that, because we weren't doing that for a very long time. I didn't mean to be flippant when someone said I didn't have it in my back pocket, but I thought it was an odd question to ask, whether or not I had a certain amount of paperwork, I had no idea the question was coming forward. So, if they expected me to have that on me, that was an odd question. So, didn't mean to be flippant, that was, that was an honest reaction in response by me. And we will get someone from Environmental Services to reach out and talk to you tonight before you leave. Is it possible to have staff reach out to you before you leave and make sure we do that? I'm not sure if our quiet zones fall into the category with the Brightline?
Actually, I cannot think of that.
Okay, please.
Yes, so what has happened is, believe it or not, last week, yesterday, I met with the MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization for Broward County, and the contractor that was supposed to install the signs, all the signposts were stolen from, along the railroad tracks in South Broward County. So, that's been delayed till they can get more in, they are working, the contractor's working, and MPO's working with Broward County to try to find other posts to put those in, so they can begin to quiet the train horns along that corridor.
Okay. Mr. Slatter, your question, "Have you ever approached me or anyone else from We the People of Deerfield Beach after a meeting to try to better understand my, or, to understand my, our questions or concerns?" No, I haven't, but I've talked to you on several different occasions and several other things, and I have talked to you, tried to, in your driveway when I was campaigning for mayor, and I thought the message is pretty clear, you didn't want to talk to me. We have had numerous conversations on issues, even came out to your street to address the issues that we had out there. If you want to talk, I'm happy to meet, I don't know who We the People of Deerfield Beach are entirely, the names keep changing. So, whoever it is, if you want to meet with me, set up an appointment, you have my number, you talk to me all the time, I don't see what the issue is there. More than happy to do it, just so you know. Re-asking the written question you received from me and avoided answering the last time, "Who's responsible for coordinating all the firefighters from outside of our city to influence our local district elections?" You will have to speak to the union, the union's the one that does that, I would imagine. Of the $63 million in the city's investment holdings identified, this is a long question, and if you would like specifics, we're happy to let you sit down with someone from our department to get you all of your answers, because it is a, looks like a seven-part question. So, we'll see if we can get that answered for you at that time. And if you want to, you have an, if you have an issue with people who work in the city that take, that don't live in the city, if that's what you're interested in pursuing, or you want to know why, that's pretty common practice, okay? Even for a city manager, not to Even for a city manager, not to live in the city of Deerfield Beach. I don't know where you were when we had that conversation regarding our city manager, but that debate had already been had and talked about. So, but I'm happy to sit down and talk with you if you'd like. Mr. Sullivan, your version of what happened with Storeall and my condensed version of what happened with Storeall are very different. If you're implying because we took donations two years before someone ran for office, you think that's quid pro quo, I think timing is really, if you're trying to insinuate that, you're way off base, okay? As far as, and the city did kind of come forward and try to stop that. We put a zoning in progress in, but we were facing the Burt Harris Act threat as well as other lawsuits because they were allowed to go in and do that. That was an issue that we had at the time. You weren't here for that, so, or if you were, you certainly weren't coming to meetings. But we've had that debate and that issue went forward with the city. It's not what we wanted there, but they were allowed to go in there, they purchased it long before Pioneer Grove came forward. Storeall bought their facility, property was purchased in May 15th of 2015. Pioneer Grove and the local activity center designation was approved by ordinance on June 6th, 2017, okay? Storeall submitted for the platnot amendment to allow the use on January 19th, 2016. It was followed by the site plan and variance approval on April 19th, 2016. Pioneer Grove wasn't in existence to 2017. Timing is what it came down to. Sorry, you don't like it, a lot of us don't. I've even told Mr. Anderson that I don't like it, but that's the project that's there. And as far as the ongoing, I believe it's still in litigation, anything that the city has in litigation that was done behind closed doors, once that litigation is settled, it's improper for us probably to talk about at this point. Will be, it will be public record as soon as it's handled and dismissed. I think that's it. I think that covered everything. Do you have anything else you want to add?
The parking lot maintenance for the Cove is scheduled for the upcoming budget.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Item number nine, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach approving the award of ITB 2018 19/12 water meter fittings and water line accessories to Ferguson Enterprises, Fortline Waterworks Inc., Core and Main LP, Layman Pipe and Plumbing Supply for the purchase of water meter fittings and water line accessories for use in water distribution system.
Okay. Anyone from the public want to comment on this item, item number nine? Not anybody come forward and close the public?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky.
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle.
Yes.
Mayor Gantz.
Yes.
Item 10, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach approving the submission of a grant application to the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission to aid in the construction of a recreational, recreational article, recreational artificial reef in the amount of $60,000.
Okay. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Not anybody come forward and close the item, number 10?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have Commissioner Miller and Vice Mayor Battle. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky.
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle.
Yes.
Mayor Gantz.
Yes.
Item 11, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach approving a special event permit application submitted by Dixie Divers for the 14th Annual Dixie Divers Peer Cleanup and Night Dive for June 14th, 2019 at 5:00 PM to June 15th, 2019 at 12:30 PM.
Can you open it to the public? I know the applicant is here.
Dr. Massey, 349 Northeast 19th Avenue. By all means, I think you shouldn't allow this to go on because we are going to break our own record this year.
Perfect, thank you. Anyone else from the public? No? Even the applicant? All right, we have Pavon, who is here from Dixie Divers. Thank you very much for doing this. I'm going to close this to the public.
And I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Miller and a second Commissioner Parnas. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky.
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle.
Yes.
Mayor Gantz.
Yes. Dixie Divers, thank you so much for all that you do in the city.
Item A1 is a motion to initiate an amendment to the B1 zoning district regulation.
No, no. Comments by administration?
Comments, I missed comments.
That'd be you.
I don't have it.
No comments?
That's why, that's why I moved forward.
Not a problem.
Ahead of you.
Yeah, yes, thank you, Mayor Gantz. Just quickly, I'd like to have Mr. Gressik, this was requested at the last meeting to give an update about recycling and illegal dumping, and then he'll just give a very brief overview regarding the beach dune vegetation project because we're still working out the logistics of that with the Marine Advisory Board. Chad?
Okay, good evening. Chad Gressik, Director of Stateable Management. I do have several updates, as the manager indicated. I do have a presentation, I hope to be relatively brief. The topics I'm going to discuss tonight is the update on the recycling program, illegal dumping, as well as our bulk collection compliance program, and a brief update on a dune vegetation status. As you all know, we entered into a contract with Waste Management in September to process our recyclables. We're approaching, well, we've actually passed the six-month initial contract term, and as you're aware, the contract provided for an 18% contamination cap over the first six months. Since that time, Waste Management has also agreed to us, as well as all the other communities that they contract with, an additional 26% cap once that 18% cap period is over. So that cap would then go through July, and then in July, we basically would pay, actually, you know, the actual contamination rate that we have within our system. As you know, we've had an extensive outreach program. Obviously, earlier tonight, we won an award, an international award for that, so that was a really tremendous collaboration between our staff as well as the Public Information Office. You know, we did a multi-week social media campaign, there were mailers, there were decals sent out. We conducted over 26 various outreach events, and we have six more events planned within the near future. We've also, over this period of time, have begun auditing some of our accounts, some of our multifamily accounts that we believed, you know, had a lot of contamination. We went out and met with the various account reps and provided them education information and outreach, and we've audited those accounts twice, and what we found is that 66% of those containers that we've audited have in excess of 10% contamination, significantly more than 10%. So to date, we've actually had 14 of those accounts voluntarily opt out of the program because they, they realize and recognize that they cannot comply with the ordinance that's in place that requires a 10% contamination. So they've obviously indicated they cannot meet that, so they've said, "You know what? We can't." So they've opted out. Some of the trends, obviously, the global market, the industry is still trying to calibrate itself to this new reality. It still has not. There may still be a bottom to all of this, unfortunately. Costs continue to rise. You know, we have a consultant that we use for solid waste-related activities, and they work throughout the state, and they're seeing, you know, anywhere from 15 to 30% increases in new hauling contracts that are going out to bid for a lot of their customers. So costs are going up across the board. Material values continue to be volatile, unfortunately, and our contamination rates continue to be high. I will get into some more of the details. Obviously, this whole topic has gotten more into the mainstream since we last talked about it. I think you can see anywhere, you can Google the information. This is a really good article that has a lot of information, a lot of informational graphics which show why this is happening. So if you, if you want to get more into why this is a global issue and why this is affecting us here locally, certainly take a look at this article. So what, what this table here represents, in the blue, is our actual data for the period starting September through January, which is the latest period that we have data from. We haven't gotten February data back from Waste Management yet. As soon as we get that information, we'll certainly share it. So just to walk you through this table, in the blue, you can see tons collected, you can see how many, how much we've paid per ton, and that's variable. And again, that's going to depend on, for the most part, the market value of these materials. You can see the monthly cost, you can see the percentage of contamination, and you can also see what it would cost for us to dispose of this material as solid waste, which is, current rate is $41.19 a ton. And then the last, the last line is, is how much we save by recycling versus, you know, sending it out as solid waste. What is in the orange is what we're forecasting once these caps expire. So as you can see in March, when that 18% cap expires, we are seeing significant jump in what we would pay cost per ton. So we would go from $1,158 to $37.49 a ton, which is just under what we would pay to dispose of material as solid waste. In July, if things continue the way they're trending, when that 26% cap goes away, we would pay our actual contamination rate, which is around 37%, and that would result in an estimated cost of $49.29 per ton, and, and you could see the monthly costs and so on and so forth. So in July, basically, we begin to trend the opposite way in regards to our costs, and it's actually cheaper projected to dispose of this material as garbage as opposed to processing it as recyclables. And I have some graphs that we can walk through. The good news is, over the six-month period, we've realized approximately $83,000 in savings. So, you know, as long as that cap's in place, as long as we have that contamination low, it makes sense to do it, but unfortunately, our actual rate is, is a lot higher. This just shows you the tonnage, tonnage collection, and the two orange are, again, forecast, so that's basically just an average of, of the months that we have data for. This chart shows you where we're collecting this material. So you can see, the lion's share of this material is collected curbside. So most of the tonnage that we collect in our program is at the curb through the car program, 19% is in our commercial and multifamily segment, and then 7% in Century Village. Contamination rates, so pre the new contract of Waste Management, we were at about a 45% average rate. We did have some audits where we were as high as 56%. So the good news is, we have seen some improvement, absolutely. You know, the first month the program was rolled out, we saw a nice drop. Unfortunately, we saw an uptick in October, and then it's kind of been flat over the last couple of months and sort of, kind of trending a little bit up, unfortunately. This chart really shows you the main issue that we're going to be facing next month. Basically, your costs, the costs for this program are going way up. The caps are going to be removed. You can see in March what happens, and then you can see what's projected to occur in This is just showing the recycling savings. Obviously, in March, we're kind of at a break-even point, and then in July, as I indicated, we will start to realize a cost negative by recycling versus sending the material into the landfill. So what are the short-term and long-term efforts that we're going to continue to do? Obviously, you know, ongoing education outreach, we have six more events scheduled. You know, we need to look at our ordinances, city policies, and other ways to hopefully encourage a reduction of use of materials and incentivize reduction. I think the biggest challenge that we're, we're going to have to put in place is, is really to try to limit the amount of this material at the source. So beginning to audit containers, and those individuals or those customers that continually have materials that are in excess of what's in the ordinance would be removed from the program. And essentially, that would eliminate that material from even getting to the processing facility and us having to pay that higher contamination fee. Obviously, the costs are going up, so we're going to have to look at either modifying our rates or adjusting our services to, to reduce the operational costs. As I showed you earlier, this is not something specific to Deerfield, this is happening across the state, it's happening across the country, everywhere where everybody's trying to deal with this new recycling reality. Obviously, we're going to continue to explore more cost-effective options that, again, because we're a hauler, we really need local options. Otherwise, it's going to be cost prohibitive for us to haul the material to another location, such as an incinerator in the south part of the county. And, and obviously, one of the things that, you know, would give us a lot of flexibility is that the city owned its own facility, its own transfer facility, and essentially, we could broker where that material would be taken, and it would give us a lot more flexibility and a little bit more options in regards to, to where that material can go. That's the, the last slide for the recycling portion. I don't know if you want to take questions on this piece or just keep going through the rest of the information.
Lights don't work.
I don't want to start a fire.
Commissioner Drosky?
I don't want to get too detailed tonight because it's not the time, and I appreciate the update, Mr. Gressik. You and I spoke for a very, very long time about this particular topic this week, and it's not going to get easier for us as a commission. We're going to have some policy debates. Can you go back to the statistics slide, please?
The table?
Right there, yes. So you can see where the disposal cost is $41 a ton, and the forecast is for $49 a ton. So we're going to be in the red very soon, once these caps go away. And you all remember the outcry that we had when the recycling program went away, and if you receive the comments that I received, is that people wanted the recycling program to stay in place, they did not want to disband it, and a lot of folks said that they were willing to pay to recycle in the city of Deerfield Beach. And that's the exact predicament that we're going to be up against come after July this year. So I just pointed out that this is the debate that we're going to, that we're going to have, and that we should probably start talking to our constituents now and just reaffirm that that is their position. There's certain alternatives to kind of lessen the blow. One would be a, you know, as Mr. Gressik said, you know, a rate adjustment or rate increase to offset this increased charge. The addition is to be more vigilant on the enforcement side of it, but how, how vigorous do we want to be in that enforcement? Tampa, for example, has a three-strikes-in-your-eye. If you, they catch you contaminating three times, they remove your recycling bin, you're out of the recycling program. That seems a little, you know, harsh to me, but, you know, do we go, someone going down the street checking every single bin? Do we check multifamily? I mean, there's another slide that showed that multifamily was 19%, question mark?
Oh, on the...
Yep, 19% of the recycling by tonnage in Deerfield Beach, but if that 19% is 75% of the contamination, that skews the entire equation that we're talking about. So I think as Chad's staff gets deeper into the numbers that we're getting from the audits from Waste Management, that's something that we certainly have to take into consideration. I don't have the answers tonight, but I'm just telling you, these are the issues going forward. We might as well, I mean, it is what it is, and I don't see any reason to sit on that and just let everyone know that this is what's coming before us, and we're going to have some tough choices to, to make, and I appreciate you putting this information together for us tonight.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll go on to the next topic, which is illegal dumping and bulk collection compliance. And as you can see, your picture tells a thousand words, but I have a video which hopefully will show you a little bit more of, of the depth of the issue that we have here in the city in regards to legal dumping. So what you have here is, this is a home camera that a resident provided to our staff. This is in the middle of the day. As you can see, their car's in the driveway. This individual came up and is unloading his trash on this individual's property, and not only on the property, but in a storm, on a storm drain. And, and we actually have multiple videos of different individuals doing this in this location. So this is an ongoing investigation with BSO, but I thought this would be a perfect way for you to understand what happens in this city, and this is in broad daylight. This is how brazen these individuals are. And, and, you know, the good news is that we now have a lot more people out there looking at this we have, you know, and I'll get into it more of that in my presentation, but it's, it's going to be a big task to get this completely resolved citywide, just because of, again, they just feel like they can do it whenever, wherever, however. So, yeah, I think you've seen enough. Thank you, Eric. So, you know, we realized we had an issue several years ago, and that really reared its head when Irma came through, and we just couldn't get the materials up. We kept going out, we'd come back on the street... We kept going out, we'd come back on the street, hours later, and there'd be more material out. And, and essentially, we're a victim of our own service level. You know, we provide a very high level of service, and, and what's happened over the years is we became lax in regards to enforcing our guidelines. So basically, we would pick everything up, and, and there would be no charges, and it would just be no questions asked. And obviously, when that happens, people continue to take advantage of it, and that happens over the years and years and years until you have a really big problem, because there's a cost to pick this material up and to dispose of it. So we've been working very hard to retrain our supervisors with the guidelines, our drivers, making sure that they adhere, adhere to the, the established guidelines, and these are guidelines that have been in place for many years. These are not new guidelines, the ordinances as well as the code. We've been working to educate individuals. When they get cited, we go out and we talk to them and say, hey, you know, your landscaper needs to take this material with them. You know, that's part of why they're charging you this charge. They need to take the stuff that they cut, because it's going to cost you and ultimately the rest of the citizens of Deerfield Beach. Same with contractors, when they do a renovation project, they're bringing materials from another city and dumping it in Deerfield because it's getting picked up. So we added an additional code inspector. You know, again, addressing landscapers, contractors, we've implemented video surveillance in various locations. We're obviously getting help from residents that now, you know, obviously are having to pay for this material because it's being illegally dumped on their property, so they're obviously taking action and installing cameras and videos and so on and so forth. One of the things we've been doing is billing out of our new solid waste billing system. So you'll see our revenues have, have gone way up, which is a good thing. And, and we're also utilizing GIS and other technologies to try to hone in where the problem areas are. And, and this is what we call a heat map. This shows you where most of the issues are arising. So we're concentrating efforts in these, in these areas. Obviously, it's, it's pretty much spread throughout the city, unfortunately, but it's gotten better. Some of the results, you know, you've, we've seen eleven percent reduction in the amount of materials collected, so a thousand tons, it's a lot of material. We've seen a three percent decrease in our disposal costs. We've seen a hundred and thirteen percent increase in our revenues collected through bulk collections. We do have two criminal cases, that BSO, you know, these individuals are going to appear in court next month. And, and these are very difficult things to catch. You know, you have to catch them in, in the act, you have to have evidence, so on and so forth. We've become experts on what we need. And, and the way we were able to catch one of these individuals was, we actually went through the pile, and we found information linking it to a property. We went to that property, we spoke to the individual. He said, no, I paid this person to dispose of the material. And essentially, what he was doing, he's going around the city, charging people to dispose of their material in his work truck, a, a private landscaper work truck, and charging them to do that, and, and basically just driving around and dumping it on other city properties. So we caught him, he admitted to it, and he's hopefully going to face some time. But these are very difficult cases to, to close. So really, the take-home message is, we need the help of the community. You guys are the eyes and ears out there, because we, we can't be everywhere all at once. And again, you saw these, these people do it in the middle of the day. So it's not like it's happening in the middle of the night, it's happening at all hours. So with that, that's my piece on the illegal dumping. You have any questions on that?
No.
Great. The last topic is, is really just sort of a, a summary of, of events, so to speak. As you know, we had a coastal workshop, our first coastal workshop in October 2017. We talked about various issues. One of the key issues was the wind-blown-sand issue at the beach. We came back in April of, of the following year and presented three options to address that issue, a wave wall, windscreen, as well as dune vegetation. At that meeting, the city commission directed the staff and the marine advisory board to make some recommendations in regards to a pilot project. At the November commission meeting, Mr. Bardis, who's the marine advisory board liaison, presented the findings of those recommendations, and we're, we're on standby from, from that standpoint, because there was no formal direction provided to staff. And, and I'm happy to report that there are several organizations, private organizations that are willing to come in here and do these planting projects at, at little to no cost to the city. So if this is something that the city commission wants to move forward with, we certainly have ways to do it in a cost-effective manner. And that's all I have on that slide.
Commissioner? Any comments?
Just to kind of cover everything, the recycling, look, if you read some articles, it says that reci, the recycling programs out there, the biggest sham is being put on the American public, because everybody thinks they're recycling and they feel good about it, but it's not going anywhere. I don't know whether that's true or not, depending on the articles that you read, but I can, certainly, the landscape has changed when it comes to what's happening with our recyclable materials. If we're looking in that very short period of time to have those kind of increases, we need to start doing these audits right away. That's my opinion. And if we don't do them, we're going to be caught flat-footed. So we need to start aggressively doing the audits to find out, and, and that will wake people up and educate them again, and if we have to weed certain segments out, we're going to have to. I can tell you that, having met with many of the other mayors in Broward County, including several of the county commissioners, they're looking at a regional way to kind of address some of these issues that we're in. I don't want to say it's back to the resource recovery type board situation we had many years ago. We don't necessarily want to be in that boondoggle, but, but certainly, there are other, there's strength in numbers, and we're trying to work together, find out what the options are. My concern is, it's not going to happen anytime soon. So we're going to have to work on our own to figure out what we have to do, but the audits need to pick up the pace. The illegal dumping, I, I have received a decrease in phone calls from people that are complaining that it's being dumped on their property. I've had an increase of people that are being, that it's being enforced that their landscapers, who have been traditionally leaving it in the yard, are now being forced to take it away. But I think that's exactly what the program has been intended from the very beginning. When it comes to the dune vegetation, we asked for a pilot program. I think we should do the pilot program. Find out, you know, what'll, what's going to work, what's not going to work. The sooner we do it, the more we're going to, the more we'll know. So, again, be sensitive to where you put it. We need to just do a test and find out what's going to work, what's not going to work, before we waste our time and money. That's my two cents on it.
Yes?
I write my district every day. The lights don't work. During the week, I spend a lot of time in the village because their bulk pickup is Friday. Yesterday, I got a call from Bernard Peta. What's the matter? Are you sick? I didn't hear from you in two days. I spot couches on Monday for pickup on Friday or Sunday, and I call code, and they come and take care of it. I've also established citizens who don't want their neighborhood to be a junk box. If they see somebody, they call me. They can remain anonymous. They can tell me, oh, Oak Ridge J., 2017, just put three couches and four cabinets on Monday for pickup on Friday. I call code. They have no lead now where it came from. They handle it. It's up to us and the citizens. I don't want to be involved. You don't have to be. Call code, give them an apartment number, time that you saw them putting out where it don't belong. You'll be amazed how fast the city gets cleaned up, instead of looking like a junk box with wet, old, moldy furniture being thrown into the, near the street on the square. Boy, that's great for property values. Somebody looking to buy, and what do they see? Broken-down furniture, old stained mattresses, laying out by the dumpster, making the place look like a junkyard. I'm adamant about recycling and no illegal dumping. I don't think a day goes by that I don't call code that something has been done illegally. And lo and behold, many of the citizens, I was at a meeting today, thanked me for it, because my area is beginning to look better. I like riding down Military Trail all the way to Sample Road on a Friday and not seeing one couch or one mattress on Military Trail from Wilds Road to Sample. Code's doing an excellent job, and your department's doing an excellent job.
Thank you.
And that's the way it's got to be. We have to be vigilant, and we have to recruit citizens who care about their neighborhoods to help us. They don't have to give their name. They don't have to say, ooh, I'm afraid. Just call me in my district and say, eleven forty, Crystal Lake Drive's got five couches out front. I call code, we go there and we look, and we try to find out who put them there.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Is that it? Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Miller?
Yeah, I, I think you really have to do your assessments between now and when the rates are due to come up. And, and, you know, it only showed nineteen percent are taken from the dumpsters, the multifamily prices. I, I think I remember saying there was, tend to be the greatest violators. I'd like to, I'd like to inform them before we have to cut them off, but I mean, if we have to cut them off, sort of, single families, we can still recycle, we need to do that. But we don't need to wait till the rates go sky-high. So as much feedback as you could give this commission, even on a monthly basis, to the progress you're making, because they're going to have to make hard decisions so we can still recycle for those who want to do it right. And secondly, I had a follow-up question. My business is on that Southwest First Way between Tenth and Fifteenth, and I learned many years ago, I have to keep my dumpster locked. And, but what I also observe is that people dump by other people's dumpsters. I mean, it just gets overflowing around dumpsters. Now, you all have to pick that up because it's illegal dumping. I mean, how does that work? I mean, it just seems like, you know, I think if we can get cooperation, I think BSO is going to look for more cooperation from single family, well, from anybody that has video cameras. I understand they're rolling out something now. My business has video cameras in the front. Cooperation with BSO, and, and I got twenty-four, seven videos, I mean, plugging in with the private videos, maybe we can catch some of the, more, a higher percentage of these violators. But they're going to be doing that more and more. I just heard a, they had a talk at Rotary about plugging into private videos, so. But I think they need to, they don't need to know monthly until the rates go up where the violators are, where the most violators, so they can make intelligent decisions when it comes time.
Yeah, so we've, to address your question, we've, we've already done two rounds of audits on multifamily communities.
Is it as bad as I think?
Sixty-six percent.
Well, then, in my opinion, I'm not going to be here, but they might have to get cut off.
Well, and, and as I indicated, there's, you know, they, they recognize the issue. So we've had fourteen accounts voluntarily basically say, we understand, we're not going to be able to clean this up. We have not removed anybody from the program. We are not at that point, but I, I believe that's the direction the commission wants to go in.
If it's a continuous violator, they're costing everybody more money.
Absolutely.
So I just, for the future, it's going to help you make a decision.
Thank you. Vice Hervell?
I'm not going to belabor the issue. Commissioner Miller touched on what I wanted to talk about, which was the cameras. More and more people have cameras nowadays on private homes, and is there a way for us to make use of that in order to catch these criminals?
Yeah, the, the example that I showed you was provided by that resident who continues to get charged for materials that people are putting out there that aren't hers. So absolutely.
Thank you very much, Chad. Appreciate it.
I guess we are, this is item A1, really, this would just be, the mayor has requested that the, the staff initiate an amendment to the B1 zoning district regulations to increase the distance separation between pharmacies and medical marijuana dispensaries, presently around two-hundred-and-fifty feet, to investigate additional spacing requirements for them. We, if the commission gives us the go-ahead, we would, this evening, declare a zoning in progress on that subject, bring an ordinance back to you on the twentieth of March, that would be our anticipated goal, to be followed by a planning and zoning board review before we can go to second reading. So we would hope to try to have the planning and zoning board review be at the planning and zoning board meeting in April, and sometime by the end of April, have action, either up or down, on an ordinance that would deal with this issue. So if there would be a, a motion made to just have us begin that process, we would then begin.
I think there's merit to this idea, and even though we'll be here to follow this through, I'd like to make the motion to...
Yeah, we would just like a motion, and then discussion will happen on the twentieth.
I make a motion to, to consider expanding the, the distance, just what the mayor thinks. Yeah.
Second, we just need a vote, yeah?
We have motion of second. All in favor, say aye. As opposed?
Again, and this is...
So this is not something we had to open to the public?
No, because you've instructed us to initiate it. It will be an ordinance which will have a required statutory public hearing and a public hearing before the planning and zoning board, because it's the land development code.
Okay, perfect.
So the zoning in progress has been declared this evening for that purpose.
All right. Thank you. Comments by the city commission, starting with District Four?
I knew it tonight. I knew District One was going to be last. I want to thank staff for a fantastic sip-and-stroll event on Saturday night at Constitution Park. I did not think that they would be able to outdo themselves this year, but they most certainly did. It was a fantastic event. I don't know how you're going to outdo yourselves next year. So city manager, if you could please pass along to all your parks and rec staff, Liz, Jacob, Adele, please, a fantastic event that they had that night. It was well-attended, the food was great, the music was great. I, I didn't hear one single negative comment the entire night, so thank you for a very well-put-on event. This Saturday at ten o'clock, so to further our discussion about recycling, two of the outreach events are actually going to be this Saturday that I'm attending, at ten o'clock at the Deer Run neighborhood in Atagram Johnson Park, and then at noon at Waterford Homes at the Crystal Lake South, which is the park bordering Tenth Street. I will be there, staff will be there, and waste management will be there for basically a do's and don'ts for recycling. So we can continue the outreach process, we can continue the public education, and little by little, try to bring that contamination rate down. Those two neighborhoods, Deer Run and Waterford Homes, do not have organized homeowners associations, so I'm putting on these public events. Hopefully, we'll have a good turnout, and neighbors will tell neighbors what to do and what not to do with the recyc to, excuse me, with respect to recycling. And last, Commissioner Miller, I will save my comments for next meeting for you. That's all I have.
District Three?
Yes. Tonight was a good example of people calling the commissioner about an item on the agenda. My advice to them was, I'm one out of five who vote. You want to be heard? Come to the commission meeting, speak your piece, tell them why you're either for or against this ordinance. And they did come, and I encourage all citizens, if there's an item on the agenda that affects your life, come, speak, let your voice be heard. We're here to serve the public. We can make decisions without you. We prefer to do it with you. Tell your friends, tell your neighbors, there's an issue that they feel strongly about, please come to a commission meeting and let your voice be heard. That's all I have.
District Two?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. First of all, Mr. Burgess, if you would have staff to put together for me a timeline of the store-off project, I would appreciate it, because undoubtedly, some folks don't understand that this building, even though I was sitting here when the building was completed, I was not involved in all of that that went on. And for the interest of the public, yes, I did accept money... And for the interest of the public, yes, I did accept money from Store Off for my campaign that's going on now. I never accepted a dime for them for the campaign previous to this. You'd have to check with the other person who was sitting in the seat at that particular time. Please do not lay that at my doorstep again, okay? Secondly, Mr. Mayor, a lot of people are not aware that we have two branches of the Kewanis here. In the city, Kewanis Deerfield Beach West, which usually meets at Ovita McKeithen Park, is looking for members. So if you have anybody who's interested, one way or the other, they're putting out a call to have people get involved with the Kewanis West. In addition to that, I would like to thank Commissioner Draskey for putting on that great party on Saturday night, had a time, a good time, talking with some new residents who told me in no uncertain terms, they used to look to Delray for good activities to go to, but if we continue to put on activities like sip-and-stroll, they would have no place to spend their money but in Deerfield Beach. So thank you for that, Mr. Draskey. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
District One, Commissioner Miller?
Before I comment, I have a question. And it's my recollection that next commission meeting, we'll start the meeting with me sitting up here. Then the new elected official will be sworn in, and I will walk down, and he'll walk up.
And then you have to sit way in the back.
I go in the back. So, now, will I also have a time to comment then? You know, a parting comment?
I've about heard enough.
I will.
It's been 10 years, Joe, I've heard enough. Absolutely. You will have the opportunity to speak.
All right, so I will make it very short tonight.
You definitely can speak next meeting.
Thank you. I probably would like to speak next week. My fellow commissioners, we were second in Broward County to ban plastic straws. I just learned that Pompano's banning straws, Delray's banning straws, Loaded Up by the Cities banning straws. I'd say, leave it alone, don't modify it. It's actually catching on, and before long, I think the whole county and other places are gonna be banning straws. And I've had, I've had family say, that's a silly little thing, it's not really gonna help. You know what? I say, it's starting to, people think about taking care of our world, and, you know, as good as plastic is, it can also have a negative side. And if we can stop one thing, it's worth stopping to leave the earth in a better shape. So the stores, straws aren't gonna make a big difference in the Pacific Ocean, but it'll make a little difference. And let's have that mentality right. So I look forward to saying, saying goodbye the next time, and I think tonight was an example. You and I don't always agree on everything, but I think we walk out, majority rules, united. So that's been the way it's gone for 10 years. And that's the way, I think, it'll carry on in the future. And I look forward to watching you guys showing up occasionally.
Thank you, Commissioner. As far as the plastic straw ban goes, and obviously, I've asked staff to kind of take a look at what other cities are doing, and maybe we can make some amendments to ours that might work a little bit better than an overall ban. But I think it's gonna get taken out of our hands, quite frankly. There's, I think there's at least two bills up in the state right now that are being looked at that not only would stop cities from being able to do it, it would wipe out pre-existing laws. So I think at this point, we, we kick into effect on April 1st?
Yes.
April 1st, ours is supposed to kick into effect. We might start enforcing something that's gonna be obliterated within a month. So by the next meeting, we might wanna consider whether we wanna suspend that April 1st date until we know what's gonna happen at the state level, or we go ahead and start enforcing it April 1st and have the state strip it away.
You don't have to have the troops out. You could just have it on books. The stores will get the idea.
Okay. The, you know, again, that's an assault on home rule put in place by the state that's looking to come forward on that. I did have a brief conversation with Chip Lamarcio regarding the bill that he had put forward regarding CRAs. There might be some more adjustments coming forward, but that is continuing to progress through the levels in Tallahassee. Couple other things real quick. Those of us here in Deerfield Beach, you're gonna be smelling probably some burning here over the next night or two. I guess there's a large brush fire out in the Everglades, and the smoke is drifting this way, Palm Beach. It's not, it's not in the city Deerfield Beach, but it will impact us, 'cause you will smell it. So those of you who are sensitive with allergies, unlike the dais here tonight, it's not on fire. Deerfield's not burning, but you will definitely smell it. Bear with me one moment, as I just flip through. Oh, the other thing I've asked the city attorney's office to look at is for us to be proactive in what we can do when it comes to the possible inclusion of recreational marijuana that might be two or three years down the pipeline. Obviously, as you can tell, with Tallahassee likes to do, they like to put things in place and strip our powers away. They're pretty good at that. But I think if we can at least kind of get creative, take a look at what's there. I don't support recreational marijuana, so if there's any ways that we can maybe get ahead of that, I think it's a good idea, and they're gonna be exploring that, whether or not it moves forward, we'll see. And Commissioner Miller, thank you. I'll embarrass you at the next meeting, but thank you very much. I think that's all I have. My apologies for anything else that I missed. Please feel free to come up and talk to us afterwards if there's something we missed. And that's it.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye. Meeting adjourned. Can you? I don't know. Do you have copy, Miss? I just gave it to him to see if he could answer some questions.